I've always thought we're not even by the right, everything you get from the other day off. The, the
Hey Randy.
Alright, well, anyway. It's in the crowd. It's sort of here by Paul.
He goes from being sick to not sick. It just goes from like, you, but then he like thinks about all the time. I mean, it's like this, you know, it's the, like, what it is. It's like when he, it's like getting a meeting versus like having a meeting. You know what I'm saying? Like, do you, do you think that the one, you think about every I still want to ask. Well, you're, you're, uh, you're also, if you're, if you're senior open school or whatever, you're No, no, either, you got by another. I can't wait to just like wake up in a second or something. Get there. And, uh, be like, immediately start. Maybe do like, oh, you know, we get there. And then we, uh,
Welcome, everyone, to the San Marcos City Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilmember Walton, would you like to lead us, please?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have John Burgess, the pastor of the Father's House with us this evening.
Mayor, council members, neighbors. It's a privilege to be here, especially on this evening. Uh, I have to laugh because Mayor Rebecca contacted me while I was in Hawaii. Um, I've spent about thirteen years of my life off and on in Hawaii. And she contacted me and asked if I'd be available for this. And I say I laughed because right before that, I was just looking at the wonders of Hawaii. Not that I was tempted to leave our wonderful place here, but I, I was looking at a rainbow and I'm thinking, man, God, this place is really beautiful. I forgot how beautiful this place was. I hadn't been there for two and a half years. And a woman comes up the hike that I was on and she was wearing a Cal State San Marcos shirt. And I looked at her, I'm like, are you from San Marcos? And she's like, yeah. And I said, what? I'm from San Marcos. That's crazy. And what's the possibilities of all the people, of all the places? And, and I laughed as I walked away, as I realized God was just reminding me, hey, John, Hawaii's beautiful, but your home is San Marcos. And I'm proud to say that my home is San Marcos. And I'm privileged to be able to pray over this new season. Uh, if you feel comfortable, let's pray together. Lord, when we have a new beginning, there's a special energy and optimism and renewed hope for bettering our future together. I pray, God, that we could tap into that energy and that renewed hope for San Marcos at the ending of this year and the beginning of a new one. God, with the oath that Mayor Rebecca Jones is about to take, God, and, and the council members that are coming along to lead us. God, you know, we've weathered many storms in recent years, literally, figuratively, financially, and of course, physically through the destructive power of pandemic. There's much healing and rebuilding to accomplish as we move forward. And I thank you, God, for the leadership of this city. God, I thank you for those that have led us successfully and will continue to do so in the spirit of unity required for such challenges. And there will be new challenges coming our way, but I'm not worried because you're with us. We don't know what the future holds, but we do know the one who holds the future. What can sustain us as we move forward is faith. Faith in you, God, who loves us and calls us to be a shining city on a hill. Faith in the ability of human beings to cooperate and collaborate for mutual good. And faith in ourselves that we can be moral agents for goodness, truth, and beauty for one another. We have a sacred duty here to make our city a place where justice prevails, where our brothers and sisters keepers. And God, where you would guide us into each of these responsibilities. For whatever crisis we're gonna face, I pray, God, that you would guide us. Scripture says that if we lack wisdom, we can ask for it, and so we do right now. The eve, God, of a new beginning, that we ask for your wisdom for the members of our council that will be faced with difficult moral choices, that you would direct us and give us the spirit of wisdom. And right counsel would fill our hearts and minds of each of our civic leaders here. May their judgments be right, their consciences glow with goodness, and their dedication to justice and mercy be clear. Strengthen them when they feel weak. Enlighten them when they feel confused. Protect them when they are unjustly opposed. And above all, give them love for the people of this fine city, San Marcos. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Skolik, could we please have the roll call?
This, Councilmember Musgrove? Here. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
And for the last time, Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, moving on to new business, our first order of business is the approval of the minutes. I'd like to ma- make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, number two, declaring the results of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022 in the city of San Marcos. On November 8th of 2022, and such matters as provided by law. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. So, moving on, uh, oral communications, outgoing and newly elected city council members. So this would be the opportunity for our public to speak. If anyone wants to get up and address the council, do we have any speaker slips? Oh, new speaker slips, it looks like. Oh, ones that I don't have to wear my glasses, that's great. Okay, first person is Greg Armstrong and Kathy Steele. Come on down.
Is this better?
Yeah, I think that's better for me. Good evening, and thanks for hearing us tonight. We're here tonight to thank Randy for his, his extraordinary service to our, our, our community. I'd like to start with Randy's ten years on our school board, where he oversaw so much positive change. And I, I had to make a list because there's a lot. He was on the governing board of the Unified School District. Um, and he saw great success academically. And, um, he also, um, led the Prop K Resolution or Bond Campaign and was actively involved in this oversight. He even had the, the campaign headquarters for it in his office. So, under his tenure, he, sorry about this. Ten schools were named the California Distinguished Schools and two schools became California Gold Ribbon Schools. We moved here in 2009 and we were told that San Marcos schools are okay, but Carlsbad schools were better. But in a short time, we saw the turnaround and, and I think a lot of that's due to, to the work that Ran- that Randy did when he was on, um, the school board. He was also the founder of San Marcos Promise and, and the Valley of Discovery Ed Foundation. Two nonprofits whose mission has been to create pathways to college and career for San Marcos students. He, to this day, it remains on his board. He helped draft the Ridgeline Protection Ordinance, which was important to me. When we moved in, we were told we wouldn't have houses on the ridge, on the ridgeline. But unfortunately, they were grandfathered in and we do have houses on our ridgeline, but after that, it stopped and our ridgelines are clear. He also served as board member and coach for several years in San Marcos Youth Baseball and coached the San Marcos High School Serve Team, who won state champs three years in a row. Thank you, Randy, for the many and varied contributions you have made to our city. We hope you stick around and continue your extraordinary service to our community. Whatever you choose, I know it will be meaningful. Thank you. Greg?
Hi, my name is Greg Armstrong and I'm a thirty-three-year resident of San Marcos. I'm here to thank Randy for his exemplary service to the city. I was excited to vote for Randy in 2018 because he captured my interest with his intellect and his creative ideas to improve the city's functioning. In his role as a council member, Randy emphasized the care and protection of our community, as well as recommending solutions to problems that the city would encounter as it grows. During COVID-19, he championed the Discover Our Recovery Business Promise Program and the Sunny San Marcos Business Sustainability Program to support local breweries. I like that. He also created the Smile Award to honor those in the community who worked tirelessly to improve our city. Randy also led San Marcos in its effort to reduce the prevalence of single-use plastic in the passage of the city's first Single Use Plastics Reduction Ordinance. And served on the Board of Directors of the North County Dispatch Joint Power Authority, the organization that provides fire and medical emergency dispatch services to the most, to most fire departments in the north San Diego County. What I appreciated most about Randy was the time he took to explain to me some of the projects coming before the council. He encouraged me to attend committee and council meetings so I'd be better informed. Randy's actions as a council member showed me that he loves our city. Thank you, Randy, for all the time and hard work to make, that you did to make San Marcos the best city, San Diego County.
Okay, next speaker is Marlene Walter.
Hi, Marlene.
Hello. Okay, I'm Marlene Walter. I live in San Marcos Mobile Estates and I've been a resident for thirty-six years. I'm watching them make the new road between Casita del Sol and the RV, um, not RV, well, they do park RVs there too, I guess, but, uh, the storage place next to Myers. They have made a triangle from Barham going towards Mission. You can only turn right into the, uh, street there and left, it'll be coming out, go in the same direction. The problem is, they took away the sidewalk. There never really was a sidewalk, but if you were in a wheelchair or walker, you could get through. That triangle blocks that area and you would have to walk out into the street or into their property and around that triangle. So before something happens that, um, I, I know I probably should have called someone in the city, but I don't do that usually. I come here. The other thing is that they put in the, the light there. I don't know, it's gonna make it worse for Casita del Sol as well as for us in turning left. And now, some mornings, it takes me twenty minutes to go from my mobile home park, get out of the park, because the traffic is backed up for the college, to get to Woodland Parkway and on to Rancheros. Twenty minutes is excessive time to get not even a mile. I could walk it faster than I can, uh, drive it. As for, uh, getting on to the freeway, it's not even that direction in the morning. It's the college kids and how fast they're driving and they won't let anyone in and they're blocking. You know how it says, do not block the driveway? But that's for going towards the freeway on Barham. But there's nothing that says, do not block, uh, people getting out of the mobile home parks. The other thing that I had to talk about is, we have seven raccoon, no, raccoons, yeah. Raccoons now, a family, I guess. And there were nine coyotes in the park. Now, I, I'm all for the coyotes, but the problem is, there's no place for them anymore because we've taken away the property that was on Myers. We've taken away the property that's on Lamori by Jack's Pond. And we're planning to put in another hundred and ninety-eighty-four units on Barham by the church. The coyotes have no place to go. They were stalking a lady and her dog the other day. She had to pick up the dog, but at least they weren't in a pack. They're now in packs. And they have no place to eat but in housing projects. And more and more people are getting upset with them and there's no place for them to go. And I think we have to take into consideration the wild animals that were here first and to have a place for them to live, um, besides in residential areas. And unfortunately, with their food sources being used up, there is no other place for them to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Uh, Lori Brown? Did you want to speak during the, um, election part? The newly and outgoing council member part? Or, or, yes, okay, then that, that's now. That would be now, sorry.
Thank you so much for all of your service here and, um, thank you, um, on behalf of Senator Brian Jones. With the outgoing members, we congratulate you on your service and for the new incoming, uh, members. Mayor Jones, uh, you, uh, are quite amazing and, um, we thank you for your service in our community. Thank you for, um, helping us with our constituency issues and we just appreciate all that you've done all these years. And, uh, our constituents, thank you as well. And Senator Brian Jones, thank you for your exemplary service and how you handled the campaign and everything that you did for the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to hold the rest of the, uh, request to speak until after, uh, the oath of office. Uh, so Councilmember Walton? The floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief. First, I want to congratulate all those that are gonna be sworn in tonight. Mike, congratulations to you. Maria, same to you, and especially you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Um, I wish you all nothing but the best. We have a beautiful city and I know that you will all do your best to take good care of it. I just have two requests before I leave. First, to my colleagues, take the long view in your policymaking. We are a rapidly changing, uh, world in how we will look as a city, who we will serve, and how people will move around in this city in the next fifty years will be shaped by local actions today. We need to be planning and intentional about where we're going and I have every confidence that you will all move us in a direction that will allow our children and our grandchildren to enjoy the many benefits of San Marcos and the quality of life that we all get to enjoy today. Second, I ask that you seek out the residents who don't have privilege or connection or money. In my fourteen years as an elected person, I've learned that squeaky wheels often do get the grease. But we have many residents who, for a variety of reasons, are unable to be squeaky. But those residents deserve the grease too, and I know you all know that. I want to thank the city staff that I've gotten to know over the last four years, especially you, Jack, for your guidance and those in the bleacher seats in the back there. Um, one thing I learned that, when I was on the school board, that I carried over to my time here in the city, and that is, I'm not an expert when it comes to running or caring for a city, and I will never pretend that I am. The experts sitting back there and up here, including Helen Peak here, and those who come to this building every day to go to work, they're the experts. Yes, leaders like us help set direction, represent residents and so forth, but the people who work here are the ones who do the hard work. And we are lucky that we have many brilliant ones. So thank you all, my best to you all. And finally, I want to thank my constituents who allowed me to serve in this capacity in these last four years, especially my supporters, some of whom just spoke, thank you. San Marcos is my home. It's where my wife Kristen and I raised our boys. Guys, raise your hands. Right there in the front row. And it's, and it's likely where we will spend the rest of our lives. I have to tell you, it's been an absolute privilege and an honor to serve in this role. And it's been an experience that I will cherish for the rest of my life and I thank you all sincerely. Thank you.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So Greg and Kathy, um, you took some of my comments, so thank you for covering all of those. You did a great job. Randy and I go back eighteen years. I don't know if you remember when we first met. It was in the old, um, chamber office when five of us were starting one of the nonprofits. And, um, uh, we've started two nonprofits together. We served on the school board for four years. We served here on the council for four years. And, um, I, I think it's already been stated, Randy has worked tirelessly for this community and so we're all very grateful to him. And I just want to say that I'm glad, um, you're gonna be continuing on the promise so we can, uh, work together on that. And, um, wish you the best and your family for, um, having more time together and, um, your very thriving law practice. So, I wish you all the best.
Okay, Councilmember Musgrove?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy and I got to know each other sitting up here in the dais. A common love for baseball?
Yeah.
For sure. Little side conversations once in a while and commending him greatly for his beliefs, his stalwart advocacy, his focus always on what's best for San Marcos. Most times, we agreed on where we were going. Sometimes we looked at it from different perspectives. But never did I look at what he was doing and think, well, he, he doesn't care about our city because he does greatly. So we absolutely wish him well, thank him very much for his service, and look forward to seeing him at, uh, the next evolution of Old Cal Coffee. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, the honor has been all mine. I'm so proud to have served with you this last four years. I'm so proud to know you. I'm so proud to call you my friend. I think you are such a strong voice and you're such an important voice for our residents, for our city. And I'm so grateful that you've been here. And I know you will continue to do some great things, right, for our residents, for the city. And I look forward to seeing that. I think what I will remember the most about you, Randy, is really how I got to see your passion up close. During the pandemic, when it seemed like the resources were not coming to San Marcos, to North County, and many of the residents that I represent, they live here in our city, were not getting the vaccines that they need, that we weren't getting the testing that they needed. You were that voice, you had that sense of urgency that I didn't see from anybody else. And I am so grateful because you inspired me. And I so hope to continue to see that. So, thank you for your friendship. Thank you for your vision. And most of all, thank you for always having our residents in mind. So, I very much appreciate that.
Councilmember, I definitely want to thank you for all of your service to our city. When you, uh, come into San Marcos from Palomarport Road, one of the first things that you see is San Marcos High School. And seeing that through from the beginning, um, really is a big deal. And it really, uh, is something that I will always remember, you as being part of the team that pushed that forward. Um, I did support it also on the council, but I didn't do any hard work, uh, like you did. And I really am so grateful that when you come into San Marcos, you, you see that. And that is, uh, the first, uh, I think, something that really defines our city. And I thank you for all of your hard work, uh, with the Ridgeline Protection Ordinance. I am grateful for everything that you've done to, for the city. And I am so grateful for all that you're doing with the San Marcos Promise, uh, helping kids achieve their dreams, finding their path, uh, to success, whatever that is. And so I really do look forward to, uh, seeing you further those, uh, efforts. Uh, we talked about that. Um, but anyway, thank you for your service. I really appreciate, uh, everything that you've done for our city and for our students and I'm very grateful. Thank you. You know what happens when you get a plaque. You have to shake all of our hands. Okay. Yes. Okay. Mr. Skolik, are you ready for the oath of office? All the pressure's on you now.
Invite Mike Sinella to the front. All right, Mike, if you want to raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I will.
I state your name.
I am Mike Sinella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
I turned this on, my cough is horrible.
Wow, that's an interesting process. And it's quite an honor to serve a community that I've been part of for a long time and love so much. But before I talk a little bit about that, I do want to call up my wife and daughter to come and join me, please. This is my daughter Brooke, who's a senior at San Marcos High School, and my wife Amy. You're probably going to hear this theme a lot tonight, but you cannot run for public office or serve in this kind of capacity without the full commitment and support from your family and your loved ones. And I know a lot of people in the audience know that this is not my first campaign. I've been involved in local government, one way or another, or running for office quite a few times. And they've been with me all the way. And I'm forever grateful, and I appreciate everything that they've done. If you follow me on social media, you've probably seen Brooke and my niece Lilly a lot. And they were true troopers out there for high school and junior high students to be out on the campaign trail with their family every weekend, giving that up. That's just tremendous. And I think Brooke's ran enough campaigns now where she could probably open her own consultant business at some point when she's older. So thank you for all your help. Amy and I moved to San Marcos in 1996 to attend CSUSM. And we never left. We fell in love with the community while we were in school. And we knew this was the place for us, not just because of the trails and the parks and the local restaurants and just the great business sector that we have here in San Marcos. But we knew that the people is what really makes our community great. And we wanted to be part of that. And we've always made it a point to try to get involved in the community and try to give back in some way. And Amy, I find this phenomenal, but Amy's only career that she's ever had since she graduated college has been with San Marcos Unified School District. And she was a teacher for a decade, and then she went on to be an administrator. But she's been doing that since she was 22 years old. And she's touched so many families and kids in our community. And San Marcos Unified School District is definitely a huge part of our family and will always be special. For the last eight years, I've served at Vallesito on the Water Board. And of course, the Water District is going to be near and dear to my heart for a long time to come. I see a couple, one of my board colleagues, Tiffany Boyd Hodgson was here. I don't know if she had to leave. James, who's our Assistant General Manager, is here. Thank you for coming. I don't know if anybody else is here, but I appreciate that. And I think those experiences between Amy's career with the school district and my experience at the Water District, and now upcoming experience here at the city, gives us kind of a unique perspective. Those are the three government entities that impact so many of us in our community. And to be able to have some experience with now all three of those. I know the city council, past and present, has really gone, come a long way in working together and collaborating and partnering with all the different entities. And I hope one of my goals and one of my hopes is to continue and take that even to another level and have all three of those entities kind of moving in the same direction more frequently. And so, thank you. Thanks to all the volunteers that are out there. I mentioned Lilly, Jonah Amadorf, who lives in San Lio Hills. He's a friend of Brooke's, and he was out a lot of weekends. I see our new county recorder and assessor, Jordan Marks, back there. Thank you. And I see Joe Garcia, who just got elected to the Escondido City Council. So congratulations and thank you. I want to wrap up because I know that the three of us are the only ones standing between you and cake. But I want to say to Randy, for as long as I can remember, Randy, you've been a huge part of our community. And I know my whole family, we're grateful for everything that you've done and wish you the best of success and whatever comes for you. And thank you again. And then for the council, my now colleagues, I just want to say two things. One is I'm excited to work with you and looking forward to the future. But also, as a new council member coming on board, for all of your good leadership and efforts, both the four of you, but also those who came before you, it's very nice as a new council member to come into a situation where there's a solid foundation. And the city is very well-run, Jack, Helen, all the staff. That's all because of you. And it makes it a lot easier and a great situation for me to come into. So thank you so much. And thank you all again. I appreciate it, and I'll turn it over to the next member.
Invite Maria down. Maria, if you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Maria Nunez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I've asked my family members who are here today too to join me up here. What I do, I do with my family. I have three other sisters that could not join us today, and I know they're watching online. I am in awe today. When I look around to see who's here today, we have great leaders here. We didn't have this diversity in 2018. We did not. So I'm in awe. It's four years later, and I can't believe some of the people who are joining us here today. It's such an honor to have all of you here and know that this is your home. You're welcome here. I am so proud of the leadership that I see here today. In 2018, little did we know that we were going to enter into a pandemic in 2020. And I'm so grateful that we have great leaders, right? That are my neighbors, that are my friends, that were willing to step out of their homes and risk their own lives, their safety, to come help us and ensure that we all had the resources that we needed. And we have some of these leaders here today, like Georgina, like the Projekto Translatino leadership that's here. And I'm so grateful that they are because we do everything as a group, as a collective. And I'm really grateful for the leadership and for the willingness. I see Pablo, I see Fida, so many individuals that had stepped up. And I have to say that I am so proud to see our future, well, they are already leaders, but we have Natalie Bartinez, Natalie Aguilar, Paidis Barisol, that are here, that are so willing to give so much of themselves. And it's so inspiring to see that. And of course, I have my family with me. And I would not be able to do anything of what I do without the support of my family, always my family. And what I want to say is that the work continues. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of challenges. But know that I will continue to be here to advocate, to support our residents, the city. I have learned so much since 2018. And I'm so grateful for the leadership that we have here at the city, as had been mentioned by my colleagues. And I don't take that for granted. We have great leaders within the city, within our community. And I hope to continue to do the work that we've initiated.
Invite Mayor-elect Jones.
Don't worry, I'll keep my speech to 25 minutes.
Raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Rebecca Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I have two people that I'd like to bring up. Robert, I would like for you to come up, and then Hayden. Hayden doesn't even know, but she's my campaign manager. And Hayden worked so hard during this campaign. And she's lived in San Marcos her entire life. And so good to see you. So I have to tell you a little story. Thanks for coming in. I have to tell you a little story. Back in 2001, I met two council members, Pia Harris Ebert and Hal Martin. And they said to me, Rebecca, you should run for public office. And I said, that's crazy. Why would I ever do such a thing? I have you. And they both told me, I will not be in office forever. And we think that you would actually make a very good council member and a good leader. And I never saw it in myself. They believed in me when I didn't believe in myself. And Pia is here this evening, and I am so grateful for all of your support and how you were the first woman that was ever elected to the San Marcos City Council, leading the way for women like me and Maria, and then also Sharon. But anyway, I have had such a privilege to represent San Marcos for the last 16 years. And this is my second term as mayor, and I cannot be more thrilled. We have so many things that we've been working on for literally decades. And by the way, next year, we're having our 60th birthday. And I hope you will all come and celebrate with us. But we've talked about the Creek Project for many years. And finally, it's going to be finished this next year. The bridges, the road improvements, the park, the bike trails, all of it is going to be done next year. We finally have our hospital, Kaiser Permanente, that's going to be completed also this year. And I have to tell you, I never thought that was actually going to happen. When I moved here in 1987, I was just a young girl. And back in '91, when I worked for Presley Homes, there was actually a hospital being talked about. And here it is, 2022, and it's under construction. So it's really exciting to see that and all the progress. And I know a lot of the things that are happening in the city have been because we've had superb leadership for six decades. Six decades of many people. Six decades of many people giving their heart and soul for our city. And it's just such a privilege and an honor to be part of that. Excited to have a new council member coming on board. And again, Randy, I wish you all the best of luck. I know you're going to continue doing good things for our students here in the city. And with that, thank you to everyone that's here. And thank you for your vote. And thank you for all of your support in loving our city of San Marcos the way that I do and giving your heart and your soul to a community that has definitely made its mark. 25th best cities for families to live in the nation. That's something definitely to be proud of. So thank you very much. I appreciate your support. So now we are going to go in the next room, and we're all going to have cake and celebrate. Thank you.
We're going to reconvene the city council meeting, so if you want to take your conversations to the lobby, that would be, or the cake, there's lots of cake left, please go enjoy cake and coffee.
Thank you.
Disable to respondify and log throughout Instagram as an audience.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We are going to get back to our regular business, so if you'd like to stay for that, great, please be seated, if not, then please just go and have the cake and enjoy yourselves, and thank you very much for coming and celebrating with us this evening. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, we have one item that I will be pulling, which is item number five, sorry, oh, sorry, roll call, but we're all present, but if you'd like to, Mr. Scully.
Well, just for the first time, Councilmember Sinella.
Here, your mic's not on.
I don't think your mic's on. We're going to try one more time.
You got to go to City Council School?
Yes. Councilmember.
Here.
Okay, we are all present, moving on to, oh, well, we would like a little bit of commentary, would you like to say anything, councilmember, to us directly?
Just, I mean, we've been talking a lot tonight, but I, since you've given me the opportunity, and I will always take one, again, just want to reiterate how thankful I am to our community, to be able to serve in this capacity, and then also thank my council colleagues for all the hard work and leadership that you've done over the years and even decades, as we mentioned earlier, and setting us, setting me up as a new council member for success by providing a great, strong foundation, so thank you.
Thank you, we're looking forward to working with you. Any other council member comments? No? Okay, moving on, we actually have our presentation this evening from the Community Energy Alliance, CEA, presentation, and Barbara Boswell, the CEO of the Clean Energy Alliance, will be presenting this evening, hello. Thank you for joining us, sorry, we were a little late getting back to everything.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members, I am Barbara Boswell, Chief Executive Officer of Clean Energy Alliance, and Clean Energy Alliance is the Community Choice Energy Program that San Marcos joined us at the end of last year. And I'd like to acknowledge the primary board member, Councilmember Musgrove, and outgoing councilmember Walton, who was the alternate, and thank them for their leadership over the past year, as we achieved some really great things in our first full fiscal year, and also planning for rolling out our service to the members, community members of the city of San Marcos. In May 2021, or I'm sorry, May 2022, Clean Energy Alliance celebrated its first year of service. We achieved many great accomplishments, including a 92.2% participation rate, which we continue through this month. We offer three different power supply offerings to customers, our minimum 50% renewable energy is Clean Impact, 75% carbon-free Clean Impact Plus, which is the power supply product that our three current member agencies that are being served have selected as their default power supply, and we also offer a 100% renewable energy product. With our power supply products, we did reduce greenhouse gas emissions among our three operating cities of Carlsbad, Del Mar, and Solana Beach by over 50%. We also saved customers nearly $2 million, as our rates are set to achieve a minimum 2% savings on generation costs. Net energy metering customers, who are customers who have solar panels on their roof, are compensated a higher generation surplus compensation compared to SDGNE. We've been growing, in addition to San Marcos joining us at the end of 2021, the cities of Escondido also joined, and we will begin serving customers in those two cities in April of 2023. In 2022, the cities of Oceanside and Vista joined CEA, and we will begin serving them in April of 2024. At that point, CEA will become the 10th largest Community Choice Energy, or CCA, in the state, will increase from serving approximately 60,000 accounts to serving over 270,000 accounts. Our load, which is how we account for the energy we're selling, will increase from 650 gigawatt hours to 2,500 gigawatt hours. This chart is a visual depiction of how we will rank amongst the various Community Choice Energy programs throughout the state. The orangish bar, the far left side, is where we are today, and then we will increase in our first phase, which includes Escondido and San Marcos, to the second bar to the right, and then the third orange bar to the right is where we will end in April of 2024 compared to the other programs. We completed our audit of our fiscal year 2122 financials, and we did receive the best opinion you can get from the auditors. We also had results that were better than what we had anticipated in our budget. Revenues came in higher at 61.1 million compared to the estimated budget of 57.3 million. Our operating expenditures did exceed our revenues because we did have higher costs, however, the revenue increase was higher than expenses, so we had better results than anticipated. We did budget, anticipating a net deficit, which is normal and expected for a first year Community Choice Energy program due to the initial startup costs. However, we had anticipated a 3.8 million deficit, and we ended at a 1.1 million deficit. That deficit was filled with a loan, which we have from JP Morgan, and we drew down approximately 8.5 million. The bottom line is, we ended the year with available funds of 4.7 million in the positive. Financial results through October of 2022 for the current fiscal year, we have budgeted to end in a positive this year, so we will have sufficient revenues to cover our costs, and end with ending fund, available funds of 8.7 billion. To date, we are running a little bit ahead of expectations with available revenues exceeding expenses of 5.7 million. I do want to note that Clean Energy Alliance, Community Choice Energy programs earn most of their revenues in the summer due to seasonality, and so we will use some of that over the coming months, as we have expenditures through the winter when our rates are lower. We also experienced a significant heat event in September, and we haven't yet seen those costs flow through, and so those will dip into those funds that we have showing here. How are we doing on our rates? Our board sets rates annually, and we set our rates to be effective February 1st of 2022 to achieve the savings to customers. Customers are grouped into what's known as vintages for purposes of exit fees. Exit fees are fees that San Diego Gas &amp; Electric charges customers when they leave service. In the city of Solana Beach, because they had created the Community Choice Energy Program in 2017, they're in a different vintage than Carlsbad and Del Mar. In, in the beginning, first half of 2022, Solana Beach customers were seeing savings of about $1.03 per month on average, Carlsbad and Del Mar were seeing a savings of about $7.89 per month. In June, on June 1st, SDGNE did decrease their generation rates, that was a temporary decrease, but it did result in the customers in Solana Beach seeing a little bit of a premium compared to SDGNE, and Carlsbad and Del Mar continue to see a savings. That is temporary, and in January, SDGNE will be increasing their rates, and we will again be achieving a cost savings as compared to SDGNE. We have various activities related to notifying and outreach to customers in San Marcos related to the enrollment upcoming in April. We are now meeting monthly with the San Marcos communication staff, we have putting together a customer outreach and communication plan, we will be meeting with key community groups during the months of January and April, we already have on the calendar meeting for, during the lunchtime with the senior center on February 16th and March 14th. We plan to be at the Spring Fling, the 60th Birthday Celebration, as well as Farmer's Markets, to be available to answer questions, and then there will be mailers going out. There will be four mailers that go out to residents and businesses, the first mailer going out in February, followed by a second one in March, and then followed after enrollment in May and June. And those mailers inform customers that they are being enrolled in Clean Energy Alliance, it tells them about the options they have with regards to power supply, and also tells them how to opt out, should they choose to opt out and stay with SDGNE. That concludes my presentation, I'm very happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
Thank you, Barbara, I have one quick question, and that is on the mailers that we'll be sending out, will that go the normal route, which a lot of times we use the Edco waste billing, or will that be another way?
The mailers go out through our mail print house, so they're a separate mailer, the first mailer is a large colored, we will have that both in English and Spanish, for those customers who have requested their communications to be in Spanish as their preference, and then the second mailer is a smaller black and white, then we send a letter, and then the last, another smaller black and white, and we do different types of medium to try and attract attention, because, you know, people, people get a lot of junk in the mail, and so we try to do it in different formats.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, a question on the outreach and communications, you said you have the, the meet with key community groups, so a couple of questions on that, one, do you already have those groups identified, and two, if you do have them identified, I'd like to see who they are, and if they haven't been identified, then, or what's the process to identify those groups?
We've been working with the communication staff of San Marcos to help us to identify who those key community groups are, that the city and the city council likes to have the city work with when there are big activities coming on board, that, and then they are helping us to identify where we plan to meet with the Chamber of Commerce, there's other groups that they've given us to, and off the top of my head, I can't remember who they are, but if you have any that you would like to be sure that we touch on, you can send that to me, you can speak with Sima or Tess to provide that to them, but we would like to meet with as many groups as necessary and as possible in order to make sure the word gets out.
So I'd like to request the reverse, I'd like to see if any groups have already been identified, who's been identified, and then if we could add that to that list.
Sure, we'll have to get the list to you.
Jack, could we make sure that we have Barbara's contact information in our newsletters so that all the councilmembers have that for reference? Thank you. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Couple of questions, so you stated the average savings for the household for, I think it was a dollar or something, or where was that? How, I guess my question, the savings is pretty minimal overall, this is all about getting to clean energy, which is the main reason behind all of this, so how, how are you going to communicate, I mean, we've talked about it, but how are you going to communicate to the households that it's not all about the savings? Because to me, it's not all about the savings.
Yeah, we have, the mailers are not large and don't have a lot of space, but we do show on there that, we list the three power supply products, their renewable energy content, and identify which, the city of San Marcos City Council this evening will be selecting the default, we identify which is the default, and the other options for them. Part of the default. We identify which is the default and the other options for them. Part of our outreach process is to also be able to talk more about the benefits and the goals of Clean Energy Alliance beyond just those four mailers. We also will be working through our social media. We will be working with city staff and through city of San Marcos social media to get the word out, to explain what's going on. We also have a community advisory committee, and San Marcos has two committee members on there. Those are Kevin Norris and Jennifer Kirschbaum. They also provide input to us in terms of getting the word out. They'll also help with some of the Nextdoor and the other social media where sometimes there's misinformation that gets out to help with providing the correct information and directing those community members who would like more information to get the information from our website, which has a significant amount of information.
And so this is specific to the city only, so if some of the county properties are within the city, but they're county properties, they would not be part of this? Or would they be?
Our, our service territory is the equivalent to the city of San Marcos city limits.
Okay.
So county properties actually are in San Diego community power.
Right. Okay. What are the possible cities are considering joining this particular alliance?
Beyond Oceanside and Vista and Escondido, we have spoken to San Clemente, but they have put that decision now on hold for the time being, and also have had some conversations with the city of Laguna Beach. However, they're unique in that they're served by both Southern California Edison and San Diego Gas and Electric, so it's a little, their situation's a bit more complicated. To date, no other cities beyond those, those other two have approached us with regards to joining.
And have all the cities in our county area region, I guess I should say, has everybody decided who they're joining, or there's still some out there?
There are still some. The city of Santee I know has not yet decided if they want to join and bring community choice to their community. Lemon Grove, I think, hasn't. There may be a few other cities towards the southern part of the county.
Okay. Okay. And then you spoke about the residents being able to opt out and their choice of power supply. I guess, you know, when this was discussed, however long ago, that was one of our big concerns was we want residents, I know they have to be put somewhere, but we want to make it clear to them that they, they can opt out of it, or they can change their source. So that's going to be communicated to them in various ways, it sounds like. Okay. And then you said a customer has to request a Spanish mailing. How would they do that if they don't know about this?
They don't request it from us. They've actually indicated when they, through San Diego Gas and Electric. So San Diego Gas and Electric continues to take the orders from customers in terms of setting up their service, and at that time, they will indicate if they have a language preference other than English. And then that's on the information we get from San Diego Gas and Electric, and so we can, we know who they are.
Okay. And then my last comment about tagging along with what Maria had mentioned about getting the word out to the community. I think, maybe our team's already thought about this, but I think if we could get the district to send, school district to send out to the parents, because when typically, I think parents read what comes from the school. So if there's any way to partner, if it's allowed, to partner with them, that might be a good way to get to, I think, only 20, 25% of our community are parents in schools. But you could hit a sizable portion if you can somehow figure out how to do that.
That's a good idea. We'll reach out and see if that's what's possible.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree. Even on organics, recycling is the same thing.
Right.
Just the kids find out about it. Yes, Council-
I do have, before we, I do have a follow-up question to, to that. The, the cost of the outreach and education is that, can you remind me, is that coming out of the, of the city's fund, or is that coming out of what's already been set aside? If you could remind me-
That's part of the Clean Energy Alliance budget. So the city doesn't have any financial commitment or requirement for, for paying for that type of outreach.
Thank you for that. Okay.
Councilmember Sinella?
Thank you, Barbara, for the great presentation. And this is my first night, so I'm really new to this. But, but I'm a little, a little bit familiar with the community choice initiatives that have been going around North County in particular. And I, I think they're great that they're going to give our community members an opportunity to choose either from SDGNE or some cleaner options. I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate or allowable, but has the, has the city hosted any sort of like public workshops on this, or is there any plan to do so in the future, just to further kind of get that communication out there? And it, it may not even be allowed. We may not want to get that much involved. I don't know, but.
There, there was quite a bit of outreach when the city was going through the decision-making process to join CEA. So there were events and workshop, and those kinds of things occurred back in the end of 2021 when we were going through that decision-making process. I don't think we had planned on doing any of those kinds of things between now and the rollout in April. Because I, you know, the information's going to be coming out pretty steadily for, for the customers to make their decision.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Councilmember Dej.
So, thank you, Barbara. Great for you to come tonight. The, the processes we have in place to reach our members, our residents, are pretty significant, more so than I think what a workshop might provide, because we will go where people generally go. Farmer's Market, different events, the Spring Fling. So you can offer the information, they can't take it. So the question I have, and I'm going to put you on the spot for the number because I don't recall specifically. The state has mandated all power providers work towards clean energy. SDGNE, I think the last time I checked, they were at 34, 38%. And every year that goes by, they have to work their way up incrementally. So even at 50%, in a couple of years, that could be outdated, and those residents that opted for 50%, would be swept up at the minimum regardless. Is that correct?
Yeah. So our minimum is 50%. However, per our JPA, we will be increasing that to achieve 100% by 2035. In 2021, SDGNE was at 41%. Our renewable, we were at 51, I think, percent per our, what's known as a power content label, which is a form of, I guess, audit process of looking at what, what did we buy and what did we sell. But we will be incrementally moving up, and our JP also, also states that we at all times will exceed SDGNE in terms of the minimum renewable energy.
Right. And I know that selling point, when we were first approached, some thought the 2% savings was significant. And I would, I know I was very vocal that that really is little consequence, so long as we're providing consistent service. So that, that cost savings really has to go to overhead, the SDGNE factors into their overall billing rate, that they're simply providing the conduit and the service, that the, they will still send out the bills, but you are now a customer of Clean Energy Alliance. Does that sound fairly accurate?
It does. And, you know, the 2% savings, as was pointed out by Councilmember Nunez, is not a significant dollar amount. But in addition to offering cleaner energy, we're also have planned for programs as our funds available have for us. And where you can really impact customer bills is by offering assistance through energy efficiency. We're working this week with a potential partner to bring low or no cost solar and battery to customers who meet certain thresholds. And so if you, if we can bring those types of programs that help reduce the overall usage of electricity, we can reduce their bill overall, not just our portion, and then they can start seeing some real savings, where the generation cost or the electricity portion is about one-third of the overall bill. Majority of the bill is for the transmission and distribution from SDGNE, which, you know, that's, that's there either way. So if we can reduce the overall usage, then we can reduce the overall bill.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just as a clarification for people out in the audience and at home, everything comes on the regular SDGNE bill. It's just a separate, it's a little line item in there. So your bill will not look too different, but it'll just be a different line item. So.
Yes. Thank you for that. That's very important, this one bill.
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Any other discussion? No? Okay. Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. I'll be pulling item number five. Do I have a motion for the balance?
Move to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? No. Okay. Item number five, Councilmember Sinella.
Yes. For item number five pertaining to the lease agreement and partnership between Valleseros Water District and the city, I'm going to abstain because I've already voted in favor of it when I was on the board for Valleseros Water District.
Okay. All right. I move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. For motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes?
Abstain.
I was getting to that. Any abstentions? Hey, just hold on there.
We'll get our timing down. First night, first night.
Okay. All right. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Oh, abstain.
Okay. All right. Motion passes four and one abstention. Okay, oral communications. We had, I think, just one other speaker, which is Miriam Sikates. Thank you for being so patient, Miriam. I, I figured that was you waiting so patiently, so I, I appreciate your patience. A little bit different format this evening.
So yeah, I'm Miriam Sikates. And yeah, this is my first time to a council meeting, so I feel like I've been initiated with all this.
No, it's very different than normal. It's a little different. You can pull the mic a little bit closer.
A little bit closer.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you.
So, so I live here in San Marcos for 15 years in the community called Somerset by the Lake. If you're not familiar with that, that's a condominium complex that holds 88 units, and it's located just south of the Albertson Shopping Center, real close to the high school.
I think it's at Viewpoint and San Marcos Boulevard, is it?
Well, Viewpoint is the complex that's right next to it, and then right next to that is Somerset by the Lake.
Okay.
Yeah. And that they were built by the same builder back in the 80s. So the reason for my coming here today is just to, to share with you some problems that we're having in the community, having to do with high school parking, the lack of there. So, and I don't know if this is the first time that you've heard of this. It is, no, okay. I'm glad to hear that you have heard about the issues that we are having. It's in our community and the adjacent community, which is called Rancho Corona Estates, that the high school, because they don't have enough parking, they do have to park in the neighborhood, adjacent neighborhoods. And what our, although our community is not gated, there is a fence around the perimeter except for the entrance, and there's only one entrance, one way in or out of the complex. So what we have is kids that are jumping over our fence, damaging our fence that we just put up not too long ago, last year, yeah, last year sometime. We spent in excess of $25,000 to get that fence up. Now it's being destroyed, unfortunately. We have video cameras on there, so we have witnessed the kids coming, going over the fence numerous times. We do approach them. This is Mike. He lives right next to the fence, and he's got a video camera on that. We've called the police, but they are indifferent. We, as they come through our complex, they're disrespectful. They leave trash. They, we found cartridges for e-cigarettes in our complex. And they're trampling our landscape, and we've put a lot of more money into our landscaping, trying to deter them from going through such as agave, agava cactus plants, but they get trampled as well. We're trying to come up with some solutions. They're kids, and we were all kids. We would all take it, if they have a shortcut, of course, we'd all want to take it. But it is causing us some financial burden, and the kids are being very disrespectful when we ask them please not to trespass. So, and there's, there is a house that they are congregating in that's in the adjacent neighborhood. I've had several people contact our community as well that live in that neighborhood adjacent to ours, that the kids are drinking and smoking. And but we're kind of at our, and this all stems from them not having enough parking at the high school, is what we see. So I think I'd like to ask at this point, since you have heard of this issue, what's, what are your thoughts on, on solving an issue with our, this parking issue?
So being that this is not an agendized item, we can't really have a full discussion with you. However, I do, we can direct staff to make sure they reach out to you. But the parking that is on site at the high school is 100% handled by the district, the school district. So we will reach out to you. I'm sure we have your information. But I would also suggest that you bring it up at the school board meeting, because they are in charge of what happens on their campus and their students. And that would be, I guess, the suggestion that we could give you this evening. And then staff will reach out to you and, and work with you and, and tell you what the options may be.
Okay. Do you happen to know how many parking spots are, were allotted for the high school?
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. I was never a board member. I don't think any of us have this information. Councilmember Walton that was up here, he probably would know.
Yeah, we kind of figured.
But former councilmember Walton, sorry. So anyway, we will definitely reach out to you and, and let you know what we-
Yeah. We've lived in the community for, love, love, love living here in San Marcos. A wonderful community. We have seen an increase in the last two years of this issue increasing with the, with the, with the parking issue.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it, and thank you for acknowledging.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's it for council comment, I mean, I'm sorry, public speakers. I don't see any, any other. Now we'll move on to reports. And I have, I wasn't at the last Sandec meeting. You were a council member. If you don't have one tonight, that's okay. It's been quite a while.
I, I came down with a popular illness that is moving around our community. It was undiagnosed at the time. I felt better to stay away, and the next day I came back positive. So I think that pretty much sums it up. I did not attend.
Okay. All right. Well, then, good thing you didn't do that. Okay, moving on, League of California Cities. Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting in November, and unfortunately, I was sick in November, couldn't attend. It, it, it wasn't person. Councilmember Musgrove was also sick, couldn't attend. We are dark in December. But I do want to mention a couple of things about the league. It is the end of the year, and the league has finalized and announced its priorities, its advocacy priorities for 2023. And you might have not seen them yet, but they are attached to our newsletter that we received last week. So what I will have, I think Phil do, is for our next agenda, include those priorities. So we, so we have them as part of the record. But I do want to mention, since I think it's important what the league will be focusing on for, for next year, if I can find the priorities. Like I said, they did announce. So the advocacy priorities for 2023 are, number one, protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness. So not a surprise there for any of us. Number two, increase the supply and affordability of housing while retaining local decision-making. And three, improve public safety in California communities. And four, safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. So that's what they've identified based on the feedback that, that we provided. So like I said, I, I will include more information at our January meeting. And I do want to also mention that for the division meetings for next year, we are going to be doing a combination of in-person and Zoom. And I think those dates haven't been finalized yet. We trust will be in-person, we trust via Zoom. But I want to remind the entire council and Councilmember Sinella that we all are able to participate in the meetings, not just the representatives. Anything else, Councilmember Musgrove, that you want to share?
Just that I was selected to, again, be the regional representative on the public safety- Safety Subcommittee, so I'll be working with them on those issues that affect us directly here and then hopefully within Sacramento as a whole. But greatly emphasizing the local control, as we were talking about with homeless and then the housing issues that we have, so that we can make those decisions here where they're best made.
Yes, thank you for that. And I'm also going to continue my service on the Community Services Committee, also advocating here in the division and across the state. So obviously, if any council members have any issues or any, any requests to bring to the attention of, of the league. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
So I was not sick.
I wasn't sick either. You guys are a bunch of sick people.
So my comments are from November, because we didn't meet in November, so this was from our November meeting. We actually meet this Thursday. Hopefully, I will be well enough to go. So we'll have our December meeting this week. So several highlights from our November meeting. I think Jack sent out, Mike, you might not have received it, but we are in the process of modifying one of our Breeze bus routes, number 347, which goes through town. And I believe we have a resident that provided some valuable information. It's a process to change a bus route, and so that process is starting. But basically, 347 is going to change from how it goes to Palmer College to Cal State. They've realized that with the new homes going in, Kaiser Hospital and all that, they can better utilize some of San Marcos Boulevard. So that, that changes in the process. It's going to take another 60 days or so before, just for the public feedback, and then the city's collaborating on it also. So that is, was a highlight of the meeting. The other thing is, we started a naming rights program, or actually, we had, we had some advertising, we started some naming rights. And basically, it's to name various, you could pay to name various facilities. And the idea is supplemental revenue. It'd be used for one-time projects because it's one-time income. Although, if it's a multi-year naming right, then it could, some of it could be utilized in the general fund. So that's starting off. Holiday Express, they had 12 trains over two weekends. It was sold out within a couple days. We partnered with a local food bank to provide food, and so that was a success. And then, you might have seen in the paper, we, you know, we started to work on a development of Oceanside Transit Center a while back, several years ago, and we are starting the process on the Escanito Transit Center. And so that request for proposals has gone out, and the process will start there. And we're looking at maybe some, some land swaps with the city to make it a, a better site. There would be some housing there also. So that is in the process. And that was main, those were the highlights.
All right. Thank you. North County Dispatch, we do not have a presentation, Clean Energy Alliance. I think she went over everything, but if there's something specific.
Wow. I was not sick for the last meeting.
Well, that's good to know.
Barbara did a great job of giving everybody the 10,000-foot look, and the financials are extremely important. But two things I want to touch on, one is, if you paid attention to the news in the last couple of days, nuclear fusion, as opposed to fission. It's fantastic. The estimate is that within 10 years, we should have that as a legitimate energy source. It does not create radiation. Small amounts can create enough energy to power numerous homes. And the French have been leading the way on this, but they're partnering with General Atomics to bring that forward. The estimate, again, is in 10 years, it should be viable, but I expect that once the entrepreneurs get a hold of it, we'll probably get it sooner than that. The last thing that affects all of us is the net metering, and I've talked about this before. It's the process where originally, solar energy, if you produce solar energy X number of kilowatt-hours from your solar panels, your service provider, enough for us, SDGNE, was obliged to pay you essentially credits for the like amount. So if a kilowatt-hour costs a dollar, and you put a dollar or a kilowatt-hour back in the grid, you got a dollar credit. Well, that has been reduced over time. Now it's about 30, 35 cents. Net metering 2.0 is what they're calling it, because everything has to be a 2-point-something. They want to reduce that further, and so you have the major power suppliers looking to bring that down, because ultimately, what's happening is we're victims of our own success as we have more and more residents and commercial entities with solar. They're putting so much power back into the grid that there's less ability for those providers to make a profit. So they want to further reduce that, and CPUC was ready to oblige. But our Clean Energy Alliance, along with others in the state and just members of the community at large, have caused them to step back a little bit and reevaluate the situation. And they're looking at it from a different lens, that if they reduce the overall amount of credit you get, the, the greatest impact will not be on people that have current solar. It's the people that can't afford it. So now they're looking at another means for providing that to folks that can't afford the solar panels, whether that's, you know, individual homes or maybe affordable housing projects. So this whole thing is on hold right now. There will be a grandfathering process, but we don't know to what extent. So the hope is that if you have solar panels or you're looking to get them, that you'll have some sort of compensation from SDGNE for the power you're providing back into the grid. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. City Council Business Visits. And we actually had a ribbon cutting. I failed on this. I did not, I forgot to turn the picture in to Phil in all, in my haste. We had a lot going on. Was there another ribbon cutting, too? Is that, is that, is that it?
We had a, Ed and I had a business visit.
At?
At True Care. It was scheduled before the grand opening.
At True Care or Community Healthcare?
True Care West.
Okay.
Community Healthcare was.
We have, we have a couple of things going on. You know, we're the healthcare hub of North County, so.
So we had, within the last two weeks, three separate occasions to visit with the True Care folks.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So I'll start it off. For those that don't remember, True Care started out as North County Health Services back in 1971. It's, it started as to provide care to seasonal farm workers, and they were so successful, it just grew from there. They serve as North San Diego and Riverside Counties. They started out in a borrowed medical van from SDSU, and now they have, I think, 13 facilities and three or four medical vans. They provide primary care, pediatric, women's health, behavioral health, chiropractic, and dental services. They opened their True Care West in San Marcos, so there's two facilities in San Marcos on September 12th, and they've served already 1,400 people at this location. So they, they are open to everyone, whether you have insurance or not. Do you have more to add?
Just a little bit. They, again, they're not turning anybody away. They do get some federal subsidies, so they can provide services to just about anyone. The only concern might be is if you have a primary provider, my case, Kaiser. If I was to go there and then attempt to get reimbursed, Kaiser might come back and say, well, we had a service here that was available. But this does bridge, provide a bridge service for those that, as they say, are either uninsured or underinsured. And they don't use the ability to pay as a metric to get treatment. And they're not a trauma center, they're, it's walk-in. They do take appointments, of course, but they want, they don't want anyone to use that as a way to circumvent their own providers, but they are very open to treating just about anyone that comes in. And they're branching out, if I remember correctly, Deputy Mayor, to mental health services as well. Yeah, a great staff there. Dr. Nath, who was in that first picture we saw, he gave us his, his history, right there, his history with the program. He and his wife lived out of the area, and when they were coming back here, he was familiar with Los Angeles, and that was kind of their first area to look at. And of course, the first area, they said, we'll go anywhere but Los Angeles. So they came down here and agreed right away that this is where they wanted to be. They live in Santa Lejo and love it in San Marcos and have absolutely no plans to leave.
Great. That's a great question. Awesome. And then we also had the ribbon cutting for neighborhood healthcare, which was on Thursday, which Councilmember Nunez, Councilmember Musgrove, and myself were at also. And then, I don't know, I mean, honestly, we, we're the healthcare hub of North County.
They're, they're off on Montiel by, if you're familiar with that area, by Turner Outdoors. They're a neighbor, and there's the Plasma Center there. There's just, that whole area has got any number of medical services.
Yep. Lot going on. Okay, San Marcos Creek District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A lot of progress being made with respect to Paseo del Royal Park. The trail between Grand and Bent has been paved, and some of the trail to the west of Bent has been paved. Had a rather large concrete pore of the bottom of the bridge last week, so you'll start to see the framework go up for the actual bridge deck and all the reinforcement work for that soon.
All this rain. Did that do anything?
No, well, not in terms of the bridge. We've, we got the bridge up and out, don't worry about too much about the rain with that. Lot of utility work, SDGNE, various drainage work. I think you saw a number of save the dates for, so we're hedging on when it's going to be done, but we, so in April and May, we put a bunch of save the dates out there as a potential ribbon cutting celebration date. So we're still firmly in that spring of next year to, to wrap it up, so making very good progress.
When I saw the save the dates, I saw April, and I went, oh, we have a date! And then I, and then I looked again, and then it was a different one, obviously, and it said May, and I went, wait, what's going on here? And then I saw, but thank you for trying to keep us on the straight and narrow, because our, our calendars do get full. So anyway, very excited to see that actually happen. So, yeah, sometime between April and May, we'll have the ribbon cutting. Pretty exciting time. Okay, Council Commentary. Breakfast with Santa was on Saturday. We had a huge turnout. I thought it turned out very well. Council Mus, Councilmember Musgrove and I were there. Then also Toys for Joy, and Councilmember Nunez was at that as well, and also Councilmember Musgrove. That was a great event. Lots of families receiving, well, the kids actually received toys, but they also had a food drive, and Dan was also there. But a toy, a food drive or food distribution and all kinds of things, a lot of love came into the community. The Rock Church, big thanks to them. It was a really good event. Anything you want to add to that?
Breaking and entering.
The what?
Breaking and entering.
Oh, breaking and entering, yes, that was also Saturday. That was an early morning, 6:00 AM. And that was Little Tommy's 26th year of doing that, where they come in and they bless a family in the community. And they actually helped, I think, up to 50 families outside of breaking and entering on that day. And it is not actually breaking, and it's not entering, it's not actually that. But there was a family that lost their dad, four kids, tragedy on the freeway. He was hit by a drunk driver, which he was outside of his vehicle because he had run out of gas, so really, really sad situation. But they came in, and you should have seen the house when we left. It was full of lots of things for the family, lots of love. Outside was decorated. The four-year-old loved Snoopy, and they even had an artist that, that decorated the house with Snoopy on the windows, and so it was really just an outpouring of love. I mean, Saturday was incredible. Kind of emotional, I mean, just a lot, you know, a lot of, you know, people that are really hurting, but a lot of love coming back to them from our community and beyond. So just a really great day for people coming together and, you know, sharing the joy of Christmas, which is about giving and not about what you get yourself, so not about receiving. Anyway, any other Council Commentary? Okay? Yes? Deputy Mayor?
I have one. So I just want to take the chance, we didn't have a meeting in November, and this is our last meeting for the holidays. So I just want to take a moment, and I think this probably is on behalf of all of us, to thank our city staff in all departments. We have 245 employees, and that doesn't include our part-time and our contracted sheriffs that you see around town. Our employees are constantly finding ways to do things better, problem solve better, collaborate. They do a lot of thinking outside of the box. They step up, whether they're asked to or not. And a lot of times, you know, you see recognition that the city receives, and we're all very appreciative of that. But a lot of that is because of the employees that create and do what they do, and people love to be in San Marcos. And so I think we just want to take an opportunity to say thank you and let you know how much we appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
And to just add to that, you know, I was doing a lot of door-knocking in the last six months or so. And people do, they love our community and our staff and how much they care for our community and how you really put your hearts and souls into our, our community. And just time and time again, there's an issue, you guys jump to make sure it's, it's handled and fixed, and our community sure enjoys living here and all that you do. So thank you very much. All right, with that, welcome again, and this, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, we'll see you back in the new year.